Okay, so we were on item three or 2.3. We left that item open. Where are we on that? 2.3.
Mayor, I know you wanted to take a close-up to get into that. But I just need to really clarify that I am not opposed to having a committee. But I would like this to be able to sit down and organize and say, "This is who we think should be on the committee. This is kind of the direction." I would like to be able to have that conversation rather than to say, "Okay, no homework for me." That's my concern with that.
Me too.
So that's what I think.
So I assume it's going to take staff some time to put together a recommendation for us on who that should be.
Sure.
So if you could please provide us maybe in an email who staff's recommendation would be to be included in that so that we can have some, a little bit of oversight and make some suggestions if needed.
And maybe even why, like this person because this would be their expertise. I mean, we should know that, you know, but it would be nice to kind of look. I don't know about Chase.
Well, I was volunteering myself, but a comment. It was brought up earlier that maybe some members of Planning Commission be involved in that committee. They have particular rules about them being involved in next partake conversations. So that would not be an appropriate person to have on.
Right, because I think that was helpful. So that's a great point.
That being said, you could convene a special joint meeting with Planning Commission, the entire Planning Commission and City Council to have those discussions, so.
I just want that kind of stuff vetted out.
And that might be, that may be something we need to consider as we move along, right? Like whether or not that's an appropriate meeting to have and facilitating that. Because I, again, I think the point is, if this is gonna result in an application for annexation, I don't want it sneaking up on anybody. I don't want anybody to be surprised. Public, staff, council, Planning Commission. It needs to be just as transparent as we can possibly make it.
Just a quick comment, and I just asked Blake if he was okay. But because we have awesome staff and they think ahead and try and plan ahead a little bit. Blake, what a sheet to me. But because he's been brainstorming this a little bit. And so I think he's done a really good job of kind of outlining, I think, and the way Blake has this broke down, and I think this is good discussion on that, is that there's kind of the policy group type component of that. But then there certainly has to be a planning, an infrastructure, a finance component of that as we get into those particular things. And of course, we know who those people are in the city that I think need to go with each of those sections. I think it's really kind of from the policy, if you want to term it that, side of things that we really need to identify who's on there. And I think the key staff certainly is going to be Chase, Alan, Wendy, and Blake from that. And then there's the communications piece, which I think is going to be, to your point, Sherri, of the transparency component of that. We want to be transparent. We want to be able to communicate and educate through the process. So I think Tammy and the communications team have to be part of that. So I really like Blake thinking ahead and trying to analyze the way that they see that from a staff perspective being the most successful.
Would council entertain some extra work sessions in order to facilitate some of these meetings? I know you're not excited about more meetings, but it would really be helpful in this process if we could all convene together and work through some of the issues.
I think it varies. Not to make it more complicated, because we've already seen, you know, just the interviewing process, right? There's some, but I think it's of significant importance to both, to all the members of this council, to staff, and especially to our public, as Sherri pointed out, that the more that, the more that these conversations are held in public meetings, the more that the full council gets to be involved in these kinds of discussions, I think the better results we get, the better outcomes. It's difficult to have a couple of members not there and try and catch up and stuff. So I think we have to do the best we can. We all have conflicts and things that come up. But again, I'm supportive of having those work sessions if we can be there, you know.
So Jackie and I can work together to get those set up and maybe send out some dates to all of you that you can look at your schedules and see if that will work.
Yep, we have some sort of working to get out. I don't remember if it's called, but sometimes they send out. I don't remember if it's called, but it's like, pick a day.
The doodle polls?
Yeah.
Doodle poll.
There we go. My text to last.
One of those figures.
Yeah.
Hey Sherri, I know on this item there are some other things you wanted to talk about.
Yeah, I do. I always say these things, and I have to go back around the staff and the colleges to the things I say, so I'll preempt always by saying, "This is no reflection on anybody if they're doing their job well or not doing their job well." But just because I'm not talking to them, something to say, "I really want to light a fire under the EDC Utah thing." We took them out there to that site next to Bullfrog, and that's what they liked. That is annexation land that needs to come into Harriman. We need jobs. We need to stop the traffic from flowing that way and keep some of it here. Make this industrial, we need this. And so I want the homework things, they can't take two months, they gotta be now. We have to get this information back to them. I want to focus when I talk about annexation. Our economic development has got to be key. We're talking, we want to spend a ton of time talking about this Olympia Hill thing. How much time have we spent in on meeting with the auto mall builders? Never have I met with any of them. We got to get going on that. We have so much money invested in this auto mall property, yet we never have meetings on that. We've had a few saying, "Hey, could you step our loan a little? Can you help us out a little?" But what is going on? We've got to get going on that. And if it's not going to materialize, we've got to figure out what we're going to do. We have to start making those hard decisions on that, I believe. We owe the water department money on that. How are we going to pay that back until we get going on that? I really, really think our focus has got to be on that stuff. I know we want this Olympia Hill thing, and I understand it. It's because it's a large annexation, but how much are we really focusing on that? I know we have a team of people that work on this, but when I went on that EDC Utah tour, those answers should have been back to them a long time ago because we can't afford to miss opportunities. And every day, different people are wanting to come to this state and develop and stuff. And if we have something that we can show them different than their seven sites they always see, get it in front of them, okay? So those are the annexation things I really want to know about because those bring jobs to our residents and jobs to our community. And I think that that's, we are lacking sorely in those types of things. So I would love to see, when we're having these annexation area updates, I want to know what is going on on that. What did they say will dial the water numbers back? Because that was a big thing, they wanted to know how much water could they use and things like that. I understand it's not our land. I understand our conversations have to materialize with our neighbors. We'll tiptoe too. Let's have more meetings with them. I know developers are going out there all the time meeting with them. Let's have a lot of very serious meetings with whoever we need to meet with. Make sure that that is getting, they can understand why it doesn't need to be houses, why it's critical to have those kinds of things in our community, okay?
I do have a minor update on part of that. We met with the sewer district yesterday and discussed getting sewer out to the edge of the Bullfrog property. They are putting that on their capital projects.
Do we have a microphone where we can use? Like, I can't hear anything.
Sorry, I'll try to talk a little louder. Maybe it's.
We met with the sewer district yesterday and talked about running the sewer out to the end of the Bullfrog Innovation District project. And so the sewer district was amenable in that meeting to taking that to their board, to put that on their capital facility project, to run that out there, which will open up one of the critical utilities to that area, so.
There was a meeting with Kennecott, with some people allowing them to speak or something. Is there a report from that?
We just went to lunch. It was a lot of talking about Kennecott's general ideas and some of the cool projects they're doing up in Magna with some land they've kind of moved around up there. And just generally saying they're amenable to all kinds of solutions. They want to work good with their neighbors and try and come up with, you know, good plans, good use for the land. But again, I think it was, I think we've used this phrase, you know, pretty pictures kind of discussion. There wasn't much substance or materially, big information. It was just kind of a get to know them.
Yeah, I think it was really the first very informal step of re-engaging in talks with them.
Good, good. Because I, but I mean honestly, and I said this on our tour too, I honestly, in my gut, I could be 100% wrong. But I believe that if we went to Kennecott, just like we did with Bullfrog, absolutely filled back a lot of the stuff that they allowed them, Bullfrog being annexed. I think if we go out there and say, "Look at this great thing that can, and why it can benefit our community, why it can stamp your name on Harding the sign," you know what I mean? And show them the benefits and the opportunity. I just don't see it pushing back a lot of that. I just think that.
We talked, again, very high level about that stuff. Again, didn't get too deep in the weeds, wanted to build some rapport again with them. But I felt like, and Steve, correct me if you think differently, but I felt like they recognize that and they're open to more talks along those lines. That was my takeaway.
Yeah, it's more an impression than anything stated, but yeah, I would agree with that.
I think that Kennecott has always wanted to be a good community partner. It's good for them, it's good for us. And so I don't, you know, I think if we show them something that's a benefit to the community, I think that they always have the intention of wanting to be a good community partner.
Yeah, unofficially, without any, nobody has come out and said this directly, but there's been hints or insinuations that that area is up against Kennecott or as it gets closer to their property. They're really not excited about having residential development there. There's a lot of impacted soils in that area and that commercial, open space. Those are types of things that I think they'd be really amenable to.
Job centers.
Yeah, job centers, you know, light industrial type of things. I think they're seeing that as part of, is a natural extension there. So for what it's worth, I don't want to make any assumptions, but I feel like they would be amenable to doing that.
Yeah, it's all, you know, on my part, it's all based off an assumption too, but just based on, I believe that their reputation is wanting to be a good community partner. I think if the county is willing to dump money and to back us, those kinds of things, and we're straight shot it up in La Porte and things like that, it makes sense to have those types of things.
That's what EDC Utah has told us, and they need us to give them the data that they need to shop it. And they, I mean, in the conversations, I know I was part of, they were blown away at the opportunity that's there.
Yeah.
And what we did voice some frustration with is, say, the Bullfrog site. We've had offers from other state job centers. Maybe they weren't big enough. UDC, EDC Utah is talking about, you know, mega sites. I mean, huge things that they've looked elsewhere because they didn't think there was anything in the valley. This is something new that absolutely ticks the boxes if we just give them the information.
I absolutely think that's why there's, you know, things went skipped past us, went out towards Eagle Mountain and started talking to Springs because they just didn't know anything was here.
Yeah, we've got to let them know. We just have to get on the map about those kinds of things.
100% agree.
I just think we're missing opportunities for good growth.
Steve, will you, I mean, I know you mentioned a couple of things the other day that you guys may have been on the tour, but I know there were some Salt Lake County folks involved in that tour or a tour out there as well. And my point being is, is I think that all of this says that there's opportunity to engage Kennecott and the county and everything, to your point, with infrastructure funding, road realignments. There's opportunity, I think, to engage everybody and have them see the value of that area developing under those circumstances.
You know, one of the words that we used in that conversation that both came up with Kennecott and with Olympia Hills team was this conversation about collaboration rather than competition so that we can find common ground, that we can all be advocating all of our resources, all of the people that we know, all the contacts, all the relationship, really using all of those resources to try and get all the things we need out here, to get funds for transportation infrastructure, to get projects advanced, you know, through the legislature ahead of schedule, to get sewer lines put out to where we need development, to get EDC Utah involved, to get Kennecott, you know, and now the Miller Group. Even South Jordan, right? Instead of being in competition with them for potential land and what's going out there, let's, you know, kind of align our plans and figure out what we can do out there. We think we'll get better solutions if we're collaborating instead of competing.
Well, that's kind of the point. I guess maybe I didn't articulate that well enough. What we talked to EDC Utah about was, look, when it's been just little old Harriman going out there and we get told, "No, there's not a whole lot that we can do." But if we're working with you and you're working with the governor's office in the county, et cetera, then it's a different proposition.
Agreed.
Yep.
And honestly, the county is really excited about out here. They, you know, of course, they approved Olympia Hills and they understand what's going on there. But, you know, as a part of that, they're working on a big trailhead project kind of in the southwest corner over there. They're going to be coming a ton of money into that. And they're devoting a lot of resources and attention to this area. And I think that, I think that's to our advantage.
Yeah. Anyway, I didn't mean to go far around there, but it's just, I just think we, we're talking about Olympia Hills, and it's one-time money, but if we can get these economic development going, it's not one-time money. We start taking care of our problem of being dependent on that. We've got to shift.
Very much agree.
Absolutely. All right, any other items on that, a particular item that we need to discuss? All right, we will move on to item 3.1.
Do you have something?
I was just going to add.
Oh, okay, please, yes.
Heather's not here tonight, so I just texted her to see if she could get something ready. We have our CD committee meeting tomorrow, so maybe she can give us an update on that, our committee meeting tomorrow.
Would you email us if there's something substantial?
Yeah, absolutely.
I'll join that meeting tomorrow. I don't, I think Jared has other things, so I'll join on that tomorrow. I'll be.
And if you can send it out to all.
Yes, I'll be virtual, but I'll be on.
Okay. All right, with that, we will move on to item 3.1, General Fund Capital Projects Discussion.
We just love hanging out with you today, John.
It's a blast. This is a different trip though, right?
Yes. It's not standard man anymore.
Okay.
At least we've got a key.
I mean, it's money. Fantastic presentation. If the music gets intense, I'll get intense, it lightens up, lighten up. Okay.
I'd like you to be very dramatic in your voice.
I will.
He sings well in a jive lately.
I need you to crescendo with the music.
You guys are going to hear the General Fund Capital Projects.
I don't even know how I know to say that word. Okay. All right, so this discussion is intended to be informative on what we did to establish the priority list. Essentially, that's what we provided, is a priority list, and we. Need more emotion, Jonathan.
You have to.
Sorry, I started dancing in front of him, but I made a.
I had to look away. I couldn't look. What I'd like to do is just go through what our process was. And, you know, I guess there's, very similar to the prior discussion is, you know, staff's prepared to move forward with, you know, any feedback that we get from council, even though we had a record.
Just one quick second. Can I like to make a motion, we just take a brief recess while this music concludes? It's, they're almost done. It's really hard to hear you, and I think it puts you at a disadvantage to try and talk over them.
Only if we go stand at their door and just do this. Would there be, and I totally support that, would there be any advantage or timing for us to go to a closed session? And I don't know how long we need closed.
Where's Chase?
To take care of that and then reconvene after they're done, back down here.
I think we can do that in 3.1. Jonathan, it's your act.
Oh, that's right.
Oh, yeah, we can do that.
Just to keep things moving.
Wait, are they done?
We'll draw my motion.
Wait, are they done?
I haven't accepted a motion yet, so.
It stopped.
Marcus, go see.
Did the strike end?
Would that be a show of force?
Yes, yes, it absolutely would be.
It's kind of funny that that's the play, too.
He just put his hand there.
Yes, absolutely. Go get it out.
We're just cleaning this.
Real quick way to end it is go get Daval. They'll just be so excited to see him that they'll stop.
I think Daval.
Okay, they're done.
All right, we're good.
All right, never mind that.
All right, John.
No, that was a good idea. So yeah, so essentially, what we did, and it's very customary, right, for council to change, you know, what this priority might be. So we're certainly open to that. What this is, is to solicit that opportunity for you as well as kind of describe what staff has done to outline these priorities. So backing up just a little bit, a general fund capital project, and I, just for sake of keeping things concise, I made an acronym. I know Mayor likes acronyms, so we have GFCP. It's defined as any design or construction project that is not eligible for impact fee or enterprise funds, right? So it has to come out of general fund or outside funding mechanisms. We have a total of 50 of those projects, and they'll go anywhere from a park replacement to a unfinished park strip, unfinished pond, roadway improvement, a safe walk route, studies, it just keeps on going. And the funds available, and I think this room understands that, but I think that it's just worth stating, the funds that are available are far less than the volume that we have for these projects. And so prioritization is key. All right, so what? They stopped playing. Go, go gadget. Okay, so what, I brought it down to a step by step. This speaks to how I think, right? But so the first thing here is, we first collected every project that is essentially a general fund project. Two, and I'm going to dive into this just a little bit more, is we calculated that priority score for each project. We calculated a priority score for each project, and I'm going to kind of get into how we did that. And then we sorted it based on that priority score. And then each project is given a project identifier based on that score. And we'll get to that as well. And then five, then what I did is we separated and brought in some additional, I put it through the lens of some special interest projects, especially including unfinished ponds, unfinished park strips, projects that have collected a fee in lieu, and roadway and pedestrian projects. And again, so these are projects with specific interests placed on a separate list based on project type, but while maintaining their project identifier from the priority it was placed from its master list. All right, so what I did here is we created questions that felt that were relevant and important to the general fund projects. And essentially, every, all 50 of these projects were, this question was asked for each one of them, and it was given a score. And those scores were summed up. But before we summed them up, we gave them a weight, right? All those weights when you add them up equal up to 100%, but. So does the project mitigate a public safety risk? We gave that a 20% weight. Does the project mitigate a legal risk? That's a 15% weight. Will external funds be awarded pending city fiscal participation? An example might be unfinished pond or park strips. If we fund, or they'll give some funding if we match that, or they'll match our funding. Is the project committed by agreement, like a reimbursement agreement? Has a fee in lieu been collected on the project? Does the project mitigate failing infrastructure? And does the project provide an aesthetic benefit? And then lastly, does the project alleviate a recurring concern? Those are the projects that, or excuse me, those are the questions that were asked and used to score for each project. And as you know, the step three, right, was to then sort it based on that score. Then step four was to give it its identifier. It's really easy, right? G1, G2, G3, based on its, you know, the one that came with the highest score went to the very top of the list, that's G1. And then as we go down, you know, G1, G2, so on and so forth. Okay, so then once that list has been created and has a product identifier, I then pulled them out to those separate special interest lists. So each group is based on a special interest expressed by city council. Not all projects on the master list, which is on the left, will show up necessarily on one of these four to the right because they may not fall under any of those. But it's okay, right? Well, it's still on the master list, though. And then some of, excuse me, the, some of these projects that's on the master list may show up on multiple special interest lists. And then the product identifier from the master list is carried over into those lists on the right. And again, the whole purpose of this was to show and view each list by category. So you're looking through the lens of that category, but then you're also seeing where it falls in line with the master list. For example, unfinished ponds, you know, we talked about that. And there's a significant interest in many for those to go and proceed and to move forward. So you'll see that I have one of those as a special interest list. And the one at the very top of that list, it also identifies where, how it scores with the rest of the 50 projects. So we thought that that would be an important thing to see.
Just out of reference, what's the highest number for an unfinished pond?
I'm going to skip ahead just really quick to answer that question. G15.
Got it.
Good question. And that's a, that's a recurring one, right? Shoshone Pond, I don't know if you saw that. All right, so that's actually, we made that one fine. Okay, so back in September of last year, we talked extensively in a joint meeting. This was, partition was gone, and we were, it was a really big one in here, and we were all talking about what priority is important for a park and unfinished pond and unfinished park strip. And we were given a handful of items that were important to the Planning Commission and the city council. And so staff took those items that were important and created these questions. So the unfinished ponds and park strips had a scoring algorithm that was different than the master list to give the priority, you know, what is in the light of unfinished ponds and park strips, what is the priority for these, just in light of these questions? And they're not the same questions as the master list. These ones are specifically in light of ponds and park strips. So obviously, fee in lieu was very important. It's at the very top, 30% weight. How long has it been unfinished? That was also important. Is it low-hanging fruit? And that, so if it's just kind of giving some reference to what that means, if it's, if it had lower cost, it has a, you know, it gets a higher score. You can get it done perhaps a little quicker. Will this project add to public safety? That was an important component. How many residents will this improvement serve? That was brought up. And then does this project, and that was number five, it was kind of a subjective, it was a little subjective for staff to figure that out. But we figured out how many parcels fall within a certain radius to that improvement. That was a really fun exercise. Number six, does the project provide a community use benefit? That was also a component that was brought up. So ponds and park strips categories are then listed in order according to the score from these questions above. And jumping to that, you'll notice that maybe it doesn't, it falls pretty close in line with the general master list, but it doesn't necessarily fall right in line.
Yeah, like 18th, low 37.
Yeah, and, yep, and G37 is not at the very bottom, if you will. Shoshone Pond, for the most case, or excuse me, generally speaking, though, it does follow. And Shoshone Pond falls to the top of the list with the questions in the light of ponds and park strips. And it's also the lowest, or it's the, it's highest on priority at least as well when comparing to others according to the master list scoring. Let's see, was there anything else I wanted to bring out there? And then unfinished park strips, very, you have G5 at the very bottom, Fort Harriman median remodel. That fell to the bottom of the list for the questions for ponds and park strips, but it was very important as far as the questions went to the master list. And you'll see that, but G7 is at the very top. Main Street, Park Strip, and Open Space, that was an important improvement, and it did make it to the top. But other than that, everything essentially followed the master list priority. So I, any questions at least to this point? I can see how this might be a little complicated. Yeah, go ahead, Jared.
So just, I mean, we, this is your number six? I can't remember anymore, five or six, I'm going through the budget. We've had something like this every time. I have a lot more to say about all that, which is good. Is this a major departure from the ranking system that's been used in the past? Because we've had, we've had a ranking system, right?
Yes, the only departure is. Yes, the only departure is, well, the most significant departure would be that I pulled these special interest lists out, just so we could see them in that lens. And that's probably the biggest departure.
Most significant change to say that the A
G numbers?
Qualified.
Yeah, those G numbers, that's not, that's not new to the engineering departments.
There's just one thing that I'll kinda point out that I noticed. Items forty-nine, fifty?
Uh, should I go to the master list to see that? Go ahead.
I'm looking at, so my first thought of that is cemetery is near and dear to my heart, and I go by it every day, in and out, and the restroom facility is, cause there's also a park there. And when there's funerals there, like a restroom facility is, and I think is desperately needed. I mean, people that live there get, people knock on their doors asking if they can use the restroom and sort of stuff. So I look at the score, I'm like, how in the world does a sign that on, that Redwood Road ranked above add restroom to the cemetery? And at least from what it looks like, it's because of question seven, right? Is that signs is, how gets a score for being aesthetic? I would just, and I'm not saying that's wrong, but I'd say maybe there should be a score for improving functionality or something along those lines.
I, I, when he's looking at this, I'm looking at some of, I'm looking at, for example, Porter Rockwell Road Park Strip. There is really, in my opinion, no real reason to do anything down there until we have more businesses. And it's above a restroom at the cemetery, and it's above, you know, you know, I, for me, that's
I'm speaking to more to kind of just the general idea of refining the criteria to help.
And that's, and that's, and I agree as well, which is why I think maybe that aesthetic benefit really just shouldn't be there, in all honesty.
Just taking, you say, sorry, Mayor, just take the question out of the
Or change it to something else.
And it might be okay to keep it there, because there are some things that they're a high sore, right? And we get complaints, and we need to get that taken care of, cause it's a high sore. But, I think none, I don't think any of those questions really speak to functionality, right? Like, what the core thing you're supposed to do is provide services. We're providing a park, we're providing a cemetery, but we're not providing that part of it.
Maybe you could say, does it provide services?
Cause I think there's, there may be some things that you put into your subgroup sorting list that would be more appropriate here. Could you go to that list? I think you might.
That says failing infrastructure, but if it's an improvement to something, right? It's not, cause then it's not eligible for impact fees or anything, it's an improvement. Is, I think maybe there needs to just be a percentage for, is this improve functionality?
Yeah, and so you, and, you know, so this, these questions are specific to ponds and park strips, but certainly another list could be made perhaps to another special interest, perhaps.
Low hanging fruit project seems, that might be a good one, or, you know, is it, is this gonna serve a whole lot of residents rather than just a few? That might be, that might weigh more heavily.
Well, number six, does it provide a community use benefit?
Right, which, which those are
These are, yeah.
These are reasonable criteria for setting priority, but perhaps those questions that you've used for ponds and park trips might be better applied to the general list as well. I don't know if we wanna
It's impossible to include all of them.
But maybe there, maybe there are more importance than whether it's aesthetically pleasing, is it gonna serve twenty thousand residents?
Maybe what I'll do is I'll jump to, so my recommendation in the end, and this is, again, this is just thought provoking, yeah, I'm just, yeah, I'm just gonna be thought provoking here, and what I'm going here is, my recommendation in the end was to follow the, the, the master list grading, despite what the rating from the unfinished ponds and park strips or other gradings, the gradings from other special interest requirements, right?
Where would that, where would that bring us down to, just out of curiosity? Like, how many projects would it fund?
So that, that's, that would depend on what we, so if we get, let's just for random number sake, if we get two million, we would just start at the top and we work down till we
So that's gonna be my next kind of question. But the point is that, having gone through this for several years now, and seeing these lists, and I'm happy to see a certain thing on that list at that spot, and then unless it's not even there anymore, it never got done before, because there wasn't enough money by the time I got down to that one, and now this deck is gonna be shut again. So just cause it's on this list, definitely doesn't mean it's getting done, and further down the list, but at least actually it's getting done.
Yeah, and to your point, every year, we, you know, we revisit that grading, you know, there's, you know, we check, you know, is there something that's changed over the past fiscal year that makes this a public risk, or is it a litigation risk? So we ask these questions, and, so they might shuffle a little bit, to your point. But, so the reason I brought that thought provoking point was, is that direction we wanna go? Do we wanna follow the, the questions from the master list and just follow that despite what you're seeing in the lens of these other special interest groups or lists, or?
I, I struggle, because I look at eight through, I look at eight through fourteen, and I see one point four million dollars for playground approval or replacement, all right, which, don't get me wrong, is important, but I see one point four million dollars, when we took one of those off, all of a sudden, now we could fund, you know, now we could fund the bathrooms at the park, and something else, and we could do three or four different projects by, by being a little bit more judicious in the application of not, everybody's gotta play their part, parks department can't just get everything, right? And that's not
If it's replacing a playground equipment that could hurt a kid
But that's fair.
That could be way more important than a bathroom.
And, and, and I don't disagree with you, and I can't see that through this list, and that's, that's the problem, is I can't see, you know, if, you know, Indian Pony needs, really needs a playground replacement of two hundred thousand dollars, or if they just need to replace a piece of equipment that's ten thousand dollars. You know, that's, that's where, that's what's hard for me, you know? Coming in and saying, I need two hundred thousand dollars for full replacement, well, that's great, but, you know, go ahead, Jared.
I just, I think that that's where science and real life kinda clash sometimes. I think what you've done is a great job of trying to come up with some sort of a basic structure. But then I think we have to go down that structure list and go, yeah, that makes sense, but in reality, because of these extenuating circumstances, we've got to bump this up here. I would also be really interested, I don't know if this is the right place to talk about this, but we're supposedly beginning eight million for AR, what is the acronym?
American Rescue Plan.
Yes. So, so how much of that money is gonna be able to be used on long-term projects, so we make best use of that money? I, I think that that's gonna be critical, because we have a certain amount of time in which we have to utilize it. So I think that that puts even a different lens on some of these projects, what can we use it for? And, and where does it bump them up the list, so that we are wise in using that money that our grandkids are gonna pay for? So it maybe should be invested in things that they're gonna enjoy, like infrastructure or things like that, so if there's infrastructure things on here, what are we doing to prioritize those in that type of a list for that type of funding? I think that that would be a really important discussion.
Has to be anchored into this, this discussion, for sure.
It's an interesting discussion, cause you do have that one criteria about a low hanging fruit project, right? And I think there's a, an interesting discussion to be had about if you have, you know, five million dollars, should you do
Two projects or forty projects?
Two really important projects, or twenty not-so-important projects, right? You could knock out half the list, but they're not as important, or meaningful, or valuable, or aesthetically pleasing, or contractually obligated, or, you know, they may not be any of those things, you get a whole bunch of them done. I appreciate that there has to be some type of criteria set. And in the absence of any definitive input from council saying, we want this to be weighted this, this to be weighted this, I think this is a phenomenal effort, like the time and effort of this is incredible. I think that there's then more of a subjective analysis afterwards to say, okay, you've really gone through this scientifically and been as, you know, objective as you can, now we have to kinda look at it more in a general term and go, ah, we kinda like this one better, even though it doesn't make sense, you know?
And I, and I would almost ask for those recommendations to be made by the directors, you know, that, that those individuals that we've entrusted with the responsibility of those departments may give us some recommendations, ups or downs, of, hey, this is something that we really do need to get done, or, you know, this is something that would be a nice, but if I can only pick half of the projects that I'm doing, these are the half that I would do. You know, and that's, and that's the way, when I look at this, about approaching it, if I can only do half of these projects, which half do I get to do? And if every single department is doing that, having that same discussion, it helps filter out maybe what is, what is, you know, to make sure that we are addressing as many and as appropriately as possible. I'm not saying that there's a right or wrong answer there. But if, I would take it from that mindset to start, as we start looking at recommendations on what would be right or wrong in that particular situation.
Mayor, if I may make a quick point, and I kinda appreciate and like where we've gotten in this conversation, and I, how do I say this? I think that I like that you see, I've got to score, very much to your point, it's very rigid and it's very Jonathan-esque.
My only point was, maybe we add functionality component to that part.
It's, it's not uncommon, I've seen this before, is, instead of, instead of starting, you know, we could flip the, the direction in which we do this, where we say, which questions are important to council? Is it low hanging fruit? Is it the questions that staff gave here, or what other questions need to be provided and we can do a grading list? Or, you know, what's been given to you is, we have this rigid scoring thing that's come to the council, and then council says, well, this needs to kinda be brought up, this needs to be brought up. So that's, there's some other things to kinda consider, how we even approach this.
Is it okay to go there?
Yeah, well, I
That one example with, with this, cause the next part of the process, and I apologize if we skipped way ahead in everything that you, you prepared, is that you have to have this criteria to get something in front of us, we, right? Department heads have to submit things, have to grade it, and put something in front of us, and the hard part for us is that here all the time will, you know, council approves it, well, we, we only can do something based on what's put in front of us. We rely on all of you to tell us what is needed. And so the, the next phase of this, right, so tell me if I am totally incorrect, all they're showing, all Jonathan's showing us and what they're putting in is, look, this is how we're kinda weighting things to put in front of you. So that's my only comment on that, is maybe add a functionality part, does it improve functionality of that?
Yeah, I've got that.
The next phase of that is, well, how do we decide what's going on? That part, I'm more concerned about the overall budget, how do we, how do we take care of our long-term obligations and problems that we have to handle for the last few months? So whatever, we're, we're gonna rely on you guys to tell us, this is how much we think we can spend from general fund this year. And here's the projects that we've thrown through the filter, right? And here's what the directors feel are important, for whatever reasons.
I agree, my, I agree, and in fact, going back to your first point, the kinda the functionality, I, I almost like that functionality piece kinda being part of that discussion, because I think that that's where our department heads can, can give a lot of validity to that, to say, yes, this is how it scored, but in the functionality things, because they're the ones that are seeing things every day, that that's when they bring that forward to us and allow that to be part of that discussion. But, but I abso, I absolutely agree with what, with the process that you just kinda talked about.
Do you realize that this, it's a really interesting debate, and I'm not sure that I have a meaningful addition at this point, but the, the fact that we could score them completely by, you know, mostly unbiased ranking system, right? There's people making the scores and difference in there, but, you know, to try and take a lot of personal bias out, you have a whole bunch of criteria and you're scoring them all differently, and you come up, and then here it goes. Well, I don't know that that's more valid than to say, I've gotten a hundred calls about this, and this is way more important than this other thing, right? Yeah, there's, there's a completely biased, personal thing we could use to make these choices that are maybe as justifiable, because, you know, we represent the public and they're giving us feedback about what their priorities are. I guess that being said is, I think it would be meaningful, perhaps as a group, to discuss, would we like to see different weights or perhaps different questions? And have it re-scored and see if some of these things like, you know, if it goes from fifty to seventeen, right? Okay, well, wow! It may not, still not get funded this year, but at least it's been moved way up in the priority list, and has a chance to get funded next year, right? Or maybe we say we're gonna use half the money for, you know, these, and we use half the money for the low hanging fruit projects, right? So we can try and get as many of those off. I'm kinda thinking out loud a little bit, but I think there's different ways to, you know, skin this cat.
The one thing I, I like about, at least starting with, not necessarily this one, but this one, or a process like it, is that it takes all of those huge lists of projects and compares them against each other. That's, that's what, the value that I find in that, because, again, for us to, to look at that huge list and try and compare them to each other in some of these same factors, that's really challenging for us to do. But to your point, you know, are they the right weights? I mean, I think they've done a pretty good job, well, well, changing the weights on Well, changing the weights on a couple of those drastically changed the list, I don't know. Maybe not. But, like I say, that's why I like, at least as a starting point.
Even if it didn't change the list, could you make an argument that a bathroom at the cemetery is more important than a park strip somewhere?
Absolutely.
And, and that seems to be a
Well, and that's why, that's why I go back to the recommendation, is for me, that's why I, I want the recommendation of the directors, is because they're the ones dealing with it on a daily basis, and we, as a body, have put our trust in them to help us with a lot of those things. And so I'm going to continue to rely on that trust and say, this is, I need that, that interpretation for your projects.
Is this your recommendation?
So what, maybe a question, and I think, Mayor, you bring up a good point, might there be, and I'm just, so the directors include, well, how about this? There are, there is potential for conflicting interests with directors.
Absolutely.
I'm, I'm saying potential, I'm saying potential, but I'm saying really there is, right? It's just that kinda the nature of, so I'm wondering, is there a concern with, you know, their, you know, their, their, their interests will come to the top, but, so where?
Well, and here's the thing, is, I actually like that, because what that means is, that means that they have to justify their, their decisions, they have to come through and say, this is why this is more important than that. Then it does come to this body to make that decision. If, I don't expect staff to, to fully vet out this entire list, but if we can find consensus across the board that, hey, you know what? Putting in some safety improvements where we have, you know, hundreds of kids crossing a major street every day at Juniper Crest and Patriot Ridge, you know, every day, and we get a lot of consensus on that upfront, well, that makes that, that part of that conversation easy for us, we get to move on to the next item. And if there is an item where there's two or three that are really competing, and it's, it's not a, we're not sure where it's gonna end up, and it might be unfunding, that's a time for staff to come and present to us and say, this is why this is important, and this is why I feel this one's important. And let us make that decision with that informed information. Because what we don't want, what we've done in the past, or what we don't want to do, is we don't wanna just have a list put in front of us, and these are all the projects, and check yes or no. And that's what's happened in the past, and we don't want that.
Yeah, I, I think that, just because we are in a budget process, I don't know that it's, it's, even though I understand the question as far as refraining questions, I don't know that it would, at this point, be time well spent for you to go back through this and readjust all the questions and go through that process again. I think we're too far down the process. But I do like the function, like the next step to be the functionality process, exactly what Dave was talking about, saying, okay, have your directors biasly look through these, because there's gonna be a bias, this is their department, and they want these things for their department, and sell it to the council, help us understand why your thing is the priority. I, I, I have no problem throwing more chairs than here.
Absolutely.
When we got together with this list, there were like twelve of us in that room, and there was all the directors, and they were all talking about it. No, we had a whole roomful of people presenting their, their priorities, which we appreciate, but we didn't say.
But that, but that's the thing, is that I'm often definitely part of that conversation, cause there's, there are many things on that list, and that's what they do, that's what they're doing, and they do. I wanna see this, right? Here's how it kinda filters out. And then I want, I want to tell us, this is how much, that we can use towards this project next year, and then it's up to us to say. And then it's up to us to say, of these on this list.
They bring us the list, then they go to the battle round. Up next is project G3 from economic development versus G9 from Public Works. Go.
And then it's like a wrestle. Public Works is winning a lot.
I believe HPD is going to bring in Dabo. They're going to win.
Can I have one more, I'm sure, qualifier here? There are, as I look down, there's a lot of projects that have very similar scores.
Yeah.
Right? Or, or only separated by.
A little.
A little bit. Perhaps we could identify a range of those and then sort those in terms of cost, right? Like if you have 10 or 12 projects that are only separated by a very small percentage, do the cheap ones first, knock them off, right? Get, let's make the money go as far as we can go. Does that?
Yeah.
Do we have a grand total on here?
That, that was my question earlier was what's the grand total?
Summing up the, the total capital project.
Fifty that made it on the list.
For the sake of all of us, they left that off.
Well, Jonathan, would it also be helpful for us to?
Yeah, where I'm going with this is that I think yes, at the final round with us, that needs to be done. Here's the finalists, right? But all 50, there's no way 50, all 50 needs to be running for money that's available this year, right? So this, this is just the first filters we need to get done. The next part really is for Alan to tell us, look, I think this is how much we can actually use from general fund. Then the directors say, you know, then you maybe do that filtering again based on funding availability. And then we get to look at it and say, well, I think these ones, this should be on the list instead of.
Yeah. Sorry, Wendy had a comment or a question.
Would it also be helpful for you all in your decision making to bring back more detail? You'd mentioned that, well, this playground replacement is $350,000. What does that mean? What does that entail and why?
And I don't need a presentation on all of these, but maybe a, a smaller.
Just the more.
The very final.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Now, the, now the 10 finalists that we're really going to consider.
I get that. That's why I just feel like budget is.
How many of those are have tos? Like this is a huge safety issue. This is a math, like an urgent liability issue or something, that we have to do this, right?
Or there's all those, yeah.
Because I think the have tos are probably almost above everything else.
Budget is our primary responsibility.
No, no.
And so if we're, if we're going to look at a list and it just simply has a name and a number attached to it, it's, it's such a very vague picture of really the impact it has on our community. And so I, I think it behooves us to understand a little bit more in depth. If I have to read for an extra five hours, so be it, so that, so I understand. Because I'm going to prioritize a park strip over a bathroom. I need to understand, I understand. Well, I'm, I'm just saying that I just, I don't think it, I think that the more time we spend on the budget, the better our city is.
Alan's really excited to hear that.
Let me just tell you though, okay? You can pick projects and put them in the budget, but that doesn't mean that's the way it happens, okay? Okay, so we take our general fund capital projects right now and y'all know it's $12 million in the hole right now because we borrowed that money to buy the auto home, okay? The way we projected the current budget, we expect that there's $2.9 million worth of projects we can build here. And we can reduce that deficit by $2 million. Or we could just say, we're not going to build anything and reduce it by 5 million. But we're saying, let's take it down a little bit here, get some of the projects done. Now I've got $2.9 million worth of projects here. I don't know that those are the projects you're going to build, but that's the amount of money that we're saying we ought to do to meet the goal that we're trying to do of reducing that deficit.
You're saying this is $2.9 million?
Yeah.
No, that's.
Once again, what's that number?
So there's five.
I didn't believe with that.
There's 4.9 million.
That we actually collect that money.
Right.
Right.
It's all.
4.9 million, but 2 million of it is going towards our debt.
Right. Okay, so, and, and like Jared says, this budget is all based on what's coming, okay? And, uh. Right.
And Alan, can I add, and you of course fix what I say?
Okay.
You're the, you're the expert on this for sure. And it also depends on decisions this body makes regarding Public Works, public safety building. Correct. And how that funding mechanism moves forward. So more to consider.
Yep.
Yeah, you know, we, that, that is absolutely part of it.
Or have money. Right.
I mean, I'm just saying, if the government gives $1 million, that would make it really pretty.
Yeah.
So what we've heard from the ARP is that it's water, sewer and broadband. But it's still to be determined, right, Alan?
Yeah.
So.
We don't have the final rules, but last we read, it said you can't use it for roads, which doesn't make any sense, but.
Has the city got a notification from the treasury of what the exact amount is that we're getting?
No.
We're supposed to get a refinement of the rules on May 10th?
Yep.
So we'll know a little bit more then.
No, we have not gotten anything as far as exactly what we're getting. We assume we're getting $8 million from things we infer from what they've told us.
I was, I did a webinar yesterday related to that. I mean, obviously it had an emphasis for my job, but they did have as part of that, a list that they put out that had a breakdown of every state, every county, every city in, in the U.S. Again, I don't know where they got their calculations, but it was, it was showing Hermon at like 5.4 million. And so, you know, again, that's, I'm interested to know what that final disbursement and if we've, and if we've actually heard what that is, because again, there's, there's quite a range of what we've heard we're getting out there.
Yeah, we, we don't have the rules yet. We don't have the amount.
And we know there's extra money for, from the state, right? For parks and trails and different infrastructure projects and, but we still don't know for sure what any of that entails or means, or what those exact amounts will be.
Well, and then there's, there's the possibility, I'll jump ahead, but you know, the, the state has allocated about $800,000 or $900,000 a year for the next 10 or four, or whatever.
For roads.
I mean, that could be, that could be bonded against, you get 10 million or 8 million now and do a whole bunch of these projects. I mean, there's, there's different options and ways to do that, right?
Yeah.
I hear a Saturday work session. What do you guys think?
What? You should have asked that at 7:00.
Baseball every Saturday.
Do you have a starting point of direction on what you need to start moving forward?
I, I feel like laugh, very similar to last time, we'll go through the recording. And we'll sort as much as we can, but what I did here, maybe if I can summarize, we're going to get directors back together. Um, we'll come up with the plan and come back to the council. Is that?
Shorten the list, do some detail.
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's good.
Okay.
All right, so great. I mean, I'm, at least for me to give any direction on a list, like how much reasonably can we expect to be responsibly put towards this?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Perfect.
Thanks, Mayor.
You're welcome. Thank you. And, uh, I feel like we've been doing a good job today in getting through stuff and having positive discussions. I appreciate all the efforts from the council today to make that happen. Uh, with that, we're going to review the 2021, 2022 Hermon City Budget.
Okay.
How much we got for 40 seconds?
Let me get that. Please, the, uh, agenda item for this, for the budget though, here is your opportunity to ask questions about what you've been given. And I'll try and answer them, or Jonathan will.
Honestly, Alan, the only question I really have is, is as you continue to refine the budget as we get closer to adoption of the tentative, are you seeing any, are you seeing any changes from what, or significant changes, I should say, in terms of what the initial work that you've done, the, the, you know, the additional allocations that, that were presented or the new allocations as part of that in terms of requests and those types of things? Is, is there significant changes that, or concerns that you are seeing based on what we've seen up to this point?
I haven't seen any, we have not made any changes. I don't see any. Don't have any at this point.
Honestly, I lost the same thing of you, Wendy, too.
Well, we have seen some increases in sales tax, right? And that's been, that was a big jump this last month.
Sales tax is up, but not a, not consistent enough. Well, we're, we're up 33% for the year.
And tell me what you budgeted again for next year.
I budgeted 25% increase, so I think we're, we're comfortable where we're at. I don't think we want to, uh, you know, increase that. But our, our growth in sales tax has been tremendous over the last couple of years. You know, last year I budgeted 16%. We hit 26, 27%. We're up again over that, again, another 30% this year. And so, but I think with what we budgeted, I think we're, we're pretty comfortable there. I don't think that it's, uh, something we want to adjust in case it's a, an anomaly up.
Yeah. And really my, my follow-up question to that for Alan and you, Wendy, both is again, back to kind of what has been added in for new allocations or new requests for the year? Are you expect, did I know what the answer is, but I'm going to ask, ask the question is, is do you feel like the, the argument validation is there for any new allocations that we are adding to the budget?
I think there is, you know, right now.
And there was only four in the general fund, is that?
Uh, general fund only had one.
Just one?
Yes, it was full-time in facilities. Um, it would be for plumbing and electrical. We also had, uh, five in the water department. There were.
Right.
Yeah, two of them were mid-year. Two of the water operator ones were mid-year, two were immediately. And then there was a water conservation officer. And then we had, um, three swarm and two civilian and the police. So that was, that was the to- total of the requests at this point.
But again, you feel like in terms of your analysis of the need of those positions?
Yeah.
There's a lot of what is there, right?
Yeah.
Annexation and how that changes things, should it happen?
All right. And I just want to, based on solely where we're at today.
Of more people, yeah, based on where we're at today, I think it's conservative, but I think our staff are capable.
I think it's, it's conservative, but I think that, you know, we, we talked about the challenges we had of doing our capital projects and looking at a public facilities area and, and we can't do them all and do everything that we want. So, um, we've talked with our staff as we went through it and said, you know, we can add people or we can do these projects or we can build public facilities, but we can't do them all. So let's see, what can we do in our operations to get the biggest share that we can put into these other things? And I think we've done good doing that, but, uh, it's going to make some areas tight. I don't know, the last time we only added one general fund body in a year and it hasn't ever happened while I've been here.
Alan, can I ask one question? I don't want to put words in your mouth or anything, but, uh, as a, as a group, the fact that increases weren't asked for, that, you know, traditional growth patterns are being curtailed in different departments, maybe even cutting their budgets or freezing their budget. Was that done with a specific role in mind? Does the, does this, this city management overall have a, we did this because we really want to have a public works facility? Are we doing this because we really want to have these projects funded? I mean, what was the ultimate outcome of that?
I think when, when I, when we were looking at it, there's three goals that we really have as a city. We, we first have to provide proper, um, services for the city. We have a whole list of capital projects to do and we have a serious need for a public works facility. Now, as we, as I look at it, as I met with our, uh, budget committee, we're looking at it going, now, we can't continue the growth that we've had in our operations if we're going to be able to fund some of these other things. The public works building is, um, pretty critical as you, you've seen, but you know, the, the amount of money we have sitting there for this and for these other projects is pretty small. So, uh, I think that, that what we're looking at is how do we provide the services that we have become accustomed to in the city? And then look towards, um, improving things outside of that, so.
I would also just add to that, Alan, that we have had the opportunity to realign some positions. So some people are taking some different tasks on that maybe they didn't have before as people have either left or gone into other positions. So we've done some of that as well.
Yeah.
Which has been helpful.
And honestly, Steve really hit on kind of where I was going with my questioning and that is, is did that, no, no, I, I, I'm glad we're on the same page is, is has this process allowed us again to be able to start really looking and planning ahead for these other big needs that we know that we have. And, and you hit on the big one and that's our, our public works facilities.
I think we're, we're looking at that and some other things as well. Probably next meeting, we'll be bringing some things back to you with some ideas, maybe some ways that we can move some of these further ahead than what they are.
Perfect. Perfect.
But if, you know, we're, uh, I do believe that, that we have a very conservative budget this year. You're not seeing much in the way of increases and, and that was on purpose.
Yeah.
I have a few questions. The rounded $5 million general fund budget, the $2 million being allocated for the reduction of the liability for the, the water thing, is that at the recommendation of the state auditor?
Well, the state auditor said we need to reduce it by 5%, which would be about 600,000 and I, and we're actually budgeting additional to that.
I would just ask the, the reasoning behind paying so much more than was being asked for when we know that there's all these other capital funds.
We don't have to. As we, we talked about it as a group, we thought that, uh, we ought to be making a bigger chunk out of it, but we don't have to if you, if you choose not to. We could add more projects in there and go in that direction.
An extra, you know, 1.4 million dollars, we could do a whole lot of those projects, right? And I'm not saying we shouldn't be reducing that liability, right? I, I agree, but if the auditor looks at 5%, maybe we can make a chase. There's money that could be used for a lot of different.
Yeah. Well, he's actually told us 5%, but I believe we've made the argument, the legal argument that we aren't even required to do that. But, you know, we, we want to make sure we stay in good graces with them and so forth. But, uh, you know, we have gone back to them with the justification for why we've done what we've done. And I believe that he was wrong and we were right, but, uh, you know, so.
So I have one financial point to make in response to that. What I tell my clients is that your mortgage person will tell you, you can qualify for X, but that doesn't mean that you really can.
Doesn't mean you should.
Right? And when I get on the, on the backend where they're trying to pay things off and get ready to retire, et cetera, I always get the question, should I pay more on my debt? I look at them and say, it's never a bad thing because that debt's not going anywhere, right? But that vacation you're taking could cost you if you lose your job next year. So I think, I, I, I'm really, I would like to stay with the plan that had that if not increase those payments with what we've been told over the next five years, if our boundaries stay as they are, we're in serious trouble paying that stuff back. I mean, and that's without a public works yard or anything else. Like that was, that was pretty dire. So I, yeah, I totally understand the point, you know, we could put it to use elsewhere, but the debt's not going. It's going to be there whether we have the money or not and if we can.
I think that's why it'll be good to go back and get the recommendations on that list because.
I'm hugely supportive of that.
Yeah.
I'm equally supportive of that principle, right? I get it. I would just say, if there are emergency needs, that would probably trump debt reduction or savings necessarily, right? Does that make sense? And I'm not, I'm not saying that we, I don't know if we have emergency needs, but, um, it's nice to know that there may be some flexibility if there are projects that are critical on that priority list that we should be really looking at, right? And it may not be all of them, maybe it's 270,000 you have to carve out to do something and pump the rest of them. I just appreciate areas where there may be some discretion that we as a council could exercise, because I think a lot of this budget is, the money comes in this pool and you pay for that pool, and this money comes in here, you pay for that, and there's not really a lot of.
There, there's a big difference between having discretion and you, and things that come up that are critical, right? That's, that's just, so I'm just playing devil's advocate.
Agreed.
I agree, because the way you put it was, it would be nice to be able to get a whole bunch of these things done, right? If we don't have to pay that, then we, then we use up that cushion if we get into a tough spot, right? And then we don't have that discretion the next sort of deal. So we just have to, agreed.
Alan, when you talked about, maybe next, just coming back with some ideas or planning as we talked about public works facility and those types of things, will that also involve, we also know that we have a need, and it's, it's not the general fund money, still budget money, but is that, will that discussion or plan also include addressing a fire station need? Thank you. Perfect. Okay, so I think we've given you direction.
Lots.
Seems like there was like 47 things in there.
Lots to do, Jonathan.
Jonathan was the star today. He really showed, shown today. Appreciate.
Standards man.
Those resources.
Yes. With that, I will move on to item four. Are there any discussions we need to have on 4.1? Anybody have questions for our attorney on that item?
I appreciated the outline. I think it was.
Okay, with that, I will accept a motion to.
I may have some questions.
Move out of our work meeting and into a closed session.
I'll make a motion to temporarily recess the city council meeting convening closed session for purposes to discuss purchase exchange of lease of real carpet aids provided by UTEC Pro Annotated, C-40205.
Motion to second. Jared, Steve, Clint.
Yes.
Jerry.
Yes.
I vote yes, that motion passes.